Regional School District School Committee at 6:01. We'll start with the reading of the operational goals. The school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. The committee's charge of accomplishing this will also be responsible for the wise management of resources available in the school district. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body, to formulate and adopt policy, by selecting the executive officer to implement policy, and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the commitments, the comments of the public, student, and staff in this decision-making processes. We're going to shift things around just a tiny little bit tonight to move up the student presentation and Allison and both George and Sarah are not with us tonight, so we're going to do the review of brief overview or do you decide to just shift it?
Just shift it.
Okay. The first order of business before we move on to the students and Allison would be to review and approve the minutes from September 9th.
Both approve and.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
I don't think Dagan said that he was maybe going to join us late, so I don't think he's on there.
I'm just kidding.
All right. So, uh, Dagan?
Good.
Go ahead.
Yes, moving to minutes.
Yep.
Yes.
And we have minutes revised or reviewed and approved from June 10, 2025. The motion to approve.
Make a question.
Second.
Just go ahead and recall approval of the minutes.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Am I supposed to abstain because I wasn't there?
It's up to your last.
You can. I think I'm going to abstain because I just wasn't there.
Shell, are you okay if we?
I'm okay.
Perfect, thank you. So we have a student council report. Is there a student?
They were supposed to be here, so.
Okay. Put on hold the student council report until they. So unless you guys want to be put on the spot and do the student council report as well, we'll table that and let you both do the NHS presentation.
Okay. Good evening, school committee members. Our names are Tegan and Romy, and we are here representing the high school's National Honor Society as co-presidents. We just wanted to let you guys know the society is running a food drive to support families in need throughout the Western Mass community, and it's open to all students and families in the elementary, middle, and high schools, schoolers. It started last week on October 6th, and it's ending on November 14th. We don't have all the boxes in middle schools yet or to the elementary schools yet, but in the high school and middle school, there are boxes for people to donate, and there's information on the boxes as well.
And then we also wanted to let you guys know that we are hosting a movie night on October 24th in the high school auditorium to kind of like kick off the food drive and get it going a little bit. We're going to be playing E.T. from 6 to 8, and it's open to all elementary and middle schoolers, and we're encouraging like families and students to donate at the door and come for the movies and snacks. It would be greatly appreciated if you could help us get the word out about this initiative, whether through official groups like school-wide announcements, by administrators on parent swear, and posters that we are handing out for the elementary schools, or also parents' word of mouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you guys have a flyer that you can?
Yeah, that's going to be my question too.
Yeah.
Do you have a flyer you could put in the chat or somewhere and we can get that to parents?
We have, yeah, we've got a flyer for the movie night and for the food drive that we wanted to distribute. I don't know how we insert it in the chat. Romy, do you know how to like share the link or?
I'll try.
Yeah, we'll look right now.
If you also send it to me, I can send it out.
Yeah, how about that? We'll email it to you.
Sounds good.
Okay, and we've got two flyers. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Allison, you have a couple of trips.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So I'm here for two different reasons. One is for the yearly AP Government and AP World History trip in Washington, DC in March, and the second is a trip in 2027 to Spain and Portugal over the April break. My dearest, can I share my screen?
You should be able to hear.
Okay. I'm going to pull up the draft itinerary for the DC trip first. Laura Moore and I are just giving these out to students. We just gave them out today. We figured out the cost, and we've been in touch with the hotel and.
Allison, if you will, your screen, a couple clicks.
All right. Oh, okay. There. Is that good?
A couple more. Show the screen, bro. There you go.
What does that mean? All right. So we're thinking about leaving on Saturday, March 14th, and returning on Wednesday afternoon, the 18th. We tried to do it so we weren't the biggest problem with sports, so we tried to do it in between seasons. If we can do it a little bit earlier in March, we have a better chance of getting the hotel. So we would go down on Saturday. Sunday would be AP Government going to Arlington on Sunday morning, and I would be taking AP World students to the Holocaust Museum. Then we will be going to the African American Museum that afternoon, so it's a museum on Memorial Day. Monday, and this is all based on who's going to be in DC, and we're hoping that we're not going to be going down this year during the spring break that Congress has. So Laura's already be reaching out to Congressman McGovern's office, and we'll be reaching out to Senator Warren's office, and I'm not sure if she'll be able to reach Mark. He tends to have a tighter schedule. But you can see on the draft itinerary that we've got Monday and Tuesday packed, and then we will be coming back on Wednesday morning, and you got before dinner time on Wednesday. And we have a lot of kids this year and a lot of kids really want to go, so we just want your seal of approval, and hopefully you'll have another great trip.
Hopefully this is going to be open for you.
Fingers crossed. I'm going down in December, so it's going to be interesting to see what's going on in December for a conference. That's going to be, that's going to be sort of my test of how things are down in DC right now, so I can report that.
And Bill, I hear the, can I just ask a quick question? Allison, do you?
Pardon?
No, sorry, you just fell off the screen and I wasn't sure if we locked you. So that's kind of my question is, is there a plan in place for what happens if things are escalating or there's national troops or museums that are shutting down? To just, it seems like a crazy question to even have to ask, but.
So the only example I can use is COVID. So we had to, we had everything all planned, and then we had to cancel everything, and we were able to get hotel money back and the bus, we hadn't paid, like you only paid the bus two weeks before. That's when they expected the check. So we're just hoping for the best that, you know, I mean, going down, we went down last year when Congress wasn't in session, and we still had interns that were able to take us around, and we were able to go to the museums. So we know DC pretty well, so, you know, we can make it something that is meaningful to the students. If the troops say, I don't even know what to say.
Neither do I.
Show the student.
As a teacher, I don't know what to say, so we will do what we can, you know?
Can I ask a question? How many students are you looking at taking and how many years have you been doing the trip?
So we've been doing the trip since 2012, and they're still trying to decide whether they're committing enough, but it looks like this year we're probably going to have around 50 students. Yeah.
Have you ever taken that many students before?
Pardon?
Have you ever, have you ever taken that many students before?
We've taken 45.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you say a little about the finances, including the availability of financial aid?
So we've taken 40, we've taken a trip with 45.
Sorry, Allison, just was wondering if you can talk a little bit about financing and cost and whether there's any student aid?
So my understanding is that if there are students that need some assistance, we just bring it to Mr. Lanitas, and the school has been able to quite a few times cover like half of the cost, and I'm sure that would be available. I think various knows a little bit more about that than me. There are, I know that there are funds that can help some of the students.
And do you know what the cost is for the rest of the students?
Oh, it's $525.
Thank you.
I didn't hear everything people said, sorry.
That's all right. Any other questions?
That's a good price.
Yeah, and it's cheaper than it was last year. So it's because we've got more kids, so it's, you know, and that's, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice little boutique hotel that's right in Boggy Bottom, and we take the kids around on the subways, and they do really well. They're, and they're open, you know, they're 11 and all three.
Bill, do you want to?
Yes.
Bill, resubmit the motion to approve the trip to DC. And second. Okay, thank you. Because we don't have to do recall this, just on favor of approving the trip to DC?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got one more for us, Allison.
So one more?
You got that?
So this?
Yeah.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so last year Jenny Yell and I took, no, not, I took kids to London and Amsterdam, well, early this year, and we had a great time, and I was going to make that my last student trip, but I decided, and the kids convinced me, to do one more. This will definitely be my last one. I'm not sure how many more years after this I will be at Frontier. So we were looking to go to Spain and Portugal in April, leaving on Saturday, April 17th, and coming back on Sunday, the 25th, in 2027, so it's a year and a half from now, a little more than a year and a half from now, so plenty of time for planning. There are already 15 people that are initially signed up for it, and I have worked with Explorica a number of times, and I know that I will be able to get them to do some discounts for people as we're moving forward. Students that already did express interest got a $400 discount off of the price. It's with Explorica, which is overseen by World Stride. This is going to be, I think, my sixth trip that I've done with them. They're a little, little bit above Explorica, I mean EF Tours. The trip we had this past April was actually private. There was only Frontier students and people, and there were like 23 of us altogether, so we had a very private trip. This one, we would be going to Madrid first, and then we would be going to Salamanca, then we would be going over to Porto, and then down to Lisbon, and then fly back. So it's warm weather there in April, so the kids get to be outside a lot, they'll be a lot of walking and a lot of exploring. We're going to be going to Salamanca where there's a huge university, and Jenny Yell is going to be one of the chakravans. She went to university there when she did her study abroad, so that's going to be fun for her. And so the price includes rent, airfare, seven nights, breakfast daily, dinner daily, and they do a very good job of making the meals an experience for the students as well. We have professional tour director, guided site staying tours, all covered with the price, visits to attractions, local guides when the cities we're visiting, and tips are also included in this. I get tips included in the price, so it's not something additional that kids have to find money for. The only cost that students have is buying lunch every day. Everything else is provided for them. And I've been to Madrid before, but I haven't been to Portugal, so it's good, kind of an adventure for me, my last time traveling with kids. So I, what's that? So I'm happy to answer questions. This, just so people know, this is the 10th overseas trip I will do with students. I've done nine before.
Do you have a ballpark of what the, I know it's going to vary depending on how many.
So I was able to, up until last week, had the price down to $3,700. It's gone up, but I know that I'll be able to get Explorica to do some other short periods to get some discounts. Right now, the price is $4,100 for everything except, again, except for lunch.
And do you know if there's any need-based?
So these are during school vacation trips, so I'm sure students could decide to do fundraising if they wanted to. Most of these trips, the students and the parents, I know students that have, because I do them way ahead of time, the students have time, and sometimes have family that do matching, but these trips, we haven't done the need-based because it's not a school field trip. It's a separate from the school day, like the school week. Like the Italy trip that they're doing this upcoming April.
I wasn't sure if you knew of any local organizations that do any grants to kids who are doing these kind of trips?
I don't know.
Questions? Motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
Well, in favor of approving the spring break trip to Spain and Portugal? And of sleep. Have fun on your trips.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate moving things around for us all today. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. All right, Shell, unlocked.
Did you get welcome?
I did not, although it's not, it's not.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So financial statements and updates. So I sent you out the expense reports. I'm going to talk about a few items. Bob did come in and review and sign the warrants. There were 23 warrants totaling $1,895,476.57. So if you're looking through the expense reports, there are some accounts with budget overages currently. I haven't done any transfers to clear deficits on the lines. Some of them are typical overages, and when I say that, it's things like the accounting software, our liability insurance, the league fees that we pay to Maya for sports. All of those rates are set after our budget comes in. They typically run in a deficit every year. We'll cover that deficit with another account line that has funds available. It's one of those ones that's a little bit harder to predict, and we can cover it in another way. Things that I did want to point out that are other new overages is any teacher's salary, whether it's labeled a teacher or guidance, nursing lines, OT, PT, those are all true overages after contractual obligations. So we settled slightly higher than the placeholder, so it is resulting in some deficit on those salary accounts. Not significant for the teachers, much more significant for the instructional assistants. So there's a few things happening there. One, we settled a very rich contract for the IAs that were higher than the placeholder. Two, we restructured the tiers based on the jobs that the IAs are performing, and there are more falling in the highest category of pay based on specialized duties that they're performing with students. And two, we always have turnover in these positions, so we've hired some people at a higher step than was in the budget to begin with. So all of that is, is resulting in about a $20,000 overage on instructional assistants. That kind of overage at one of our elementary schools would be much more challenging to absorb into the budget, but we'll be able to recoup that from another expense line. The other thing that I wanted to mention on occupational therapy is we have someone on a paid leave of absence, and their replacement is in the budget as well because we did have to backfill the position. So that's about a $19,000 overage as well there. So just some bigger things for you to have on the radar as we go through the year. The health insurance overage is not accounted for in this report. We just received the newest bill that has the new rates on it with the 10-1 increase, so we'll be accounting for that. You'll see it in the next reporting cycle.
We're going to be discussing that more in greater depth for.
The insurance?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, yeah. But my estimate right now is around $75,000 that I think we're going to be over in that account. So all of these little things add up. They're much more significant overages than we had in these expense accounts in the past, so it will lead into our excess and deficiency certification for next year because it just reduces our free cash as we're going to use surplus funds to help our overages. So any questions about that? I know it's a lot of information. Okay. The other thing is, the audit is complete. I signed and certified along with our treasurer, Michael Marge, the forms on DLS website late last week, so Scanlon will go in, they'll do their final component and get it uploaded to DLS. Estimated right now, $500,000, maybe a little bit higher. I don't expect it to be less than that. The 5% cap would have been around $650,000, so we're under that 5% maximum, but still in a healthy position to be able to have some money for the way for, you know, parking lot that we're going to talk about. Group is still coming up for any other overages and to help support our budget next year because we already know it's going to be a challenging year. And I emailed you out a report that had revolving fund update. I gave you the starting balances where we closed out for June 30th, anticipated revenues, anticipated expenses, and projections for end of year. What I wanted to say, I gave you school choice, I gave you special education revolving and school lunch. Those are the three primary revolving funds. School choice currently is projected at 1.7 at the end of year, 1.7 million for balance in our school choice fund. Expenditures are exceding revenue when you look at choice and charter going out and/or other expenses, but what I will say about that is last budget cycle, if you remember, we voted to use an additional $100,000 to school choice to help produce the assessment, so that's in there. And it's a little bit deceiving because rural aid has to be used in the year that it's received, so we took rural aid cash through it in school choice and are now expensing that out. So it's really like $200,000 of choice expenses that really aren't from our school choice revenue coming in, which I know is complicated, but I just want to make sure we're being transparent about.
And rural aid, so bye-bye?
We haven't heard that yet.
What is the situation with rural aid?
Rural aid was cut by 25% from the previous year, but I have, it has been suggested there will be another fair share supplemental budget that will restore the amountless cut before the end of this year. Not guaranteed, but that's the.
We don't know our order yet either. We still haven't received anything from the state.
Not even the allocation?
No.
Number? Okay. We were told we would get that in August this year. I'll ask about that.
I think it was November last year, but.
It was just before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. So we're in a healthy spot for school choice. The revenue coming in could be higher than what I'm anticipating right now. I'm waiting for the student information data to be certified with DESI for our 10-1 enrollment, so once I have those numbers from the IT department, it could mean some growth in revenue for us because I know we had some larger numbers coming in. Special education revolving, the one item that I want to point out there is last month I had talked about our out-of-district tuition being about $200,000 higher than we budgeted for based on outplacements. The special education director and I talked about how to pay for those expenditures, and we're going to use some revolving funds to do that. Even with that additional expense, we're ending the year roughly at about $250,000 in that account, so we're still in a good spot. And then school lunch has more money than we've ever had at about $450,000. The school lunch director and I talk regularly about equipment upgrades, putting some of that back into the food to try to increase food quality and those kind of things. We have a lot of cool things going on in the Department of School Programs District wide this year, so hopefully we'll see some improvement there as well. Question about money revolving?
Can the, those fund balances, are those allowed to make money for as interest or investment?
So all of the money that we have sits in an investment account regardless of what type of fund it's for. Only these certain pots can be revolving so we can carry those balances, so we do earn interest on those. I don't have the June 30th numbers on me. June 30th of the prior year of 2024, we had earned over $100,000 in interest. I think this past year was something like $60,000, so we're definitely seeing some return on our money. Any other questions?
Just didn't know if you wanted to touch on, I don't know that everybody got the letters that you sent out to the towns or?
Oh, everyone did not get. I just.
These are one of those things where like we got to our form.
Yeah, and we were required to ref, so what Missy's referring to is I CC'd her on some communications with each of the four towns. Chapter 70 ended up being $100 per people instead of $30 per people in the final state calculation, so we owe our towns refund on the assessment. So I issued those notices. We don't actually cut checks back to them, we just reduce the amount that they pay us in their final bills because they pay four times a year, so that happened this week. Yeah. I think it was total like maybe $38,000 extra that part of the fee that we had to return to the towns.
And then the last thing to attach to all that.
And then the last thing to catch to all that, so there's been lots of talk behind the scenes about N C cuts, whether or not the state revenues are down, and they have to make that decision by fifteenth, which is tomorrow. So we'll have an idea by the end of the week whether or not, but that's still...
And in case you need a little build-up to it.
I'm gonna say it's for field hockey, but we could pretend it's for you.
You don't have it?
I have.
That's great. Um, so, anyway, so one more day of the week, that kind of thing's been looming. Uh, Julie Kelly, who is, you know, is kind of organized our, having asked us, uh, ours, um, has been kind of concerned about that, because we've been small talk about N C cuts, and I see that's been a problem for transportation and rural aid. And so it's always been the theory, last year, and we talked about last year, they didn't give us rural aids to rent any back, and I said, it didn't happen. So it's that kind of doom and gloom, where we don't wanna really talk about it, but I just want people to know it. So by the end of this week, we'll be clear about that concern, hopefully.
Are you, can you give us a brief update on George's?
You know, I didn't, you know, so George's available today, uh, and... It's fine, I don't have his report.
Okay, correct.
I haven't seen it. Okay.
I think there's at least two people here from the public anxiety, either view of public comment. Seeing as no public comment open by the unfinished business and...
Great, so you have a strategic plan. Um, we talked about it last time. Any questions or concerns? Move that forward.
Shoot, I didn't look at you. Been looking for you there, for real, if you were gonna come in here.
I know.
Welcome, thanks, thanks for swinging by on your way back through. Any questions on the strategic plan? Everybody?
The final plan does have a fix, does have a fix, which, 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 the sizing of the, uh, course track. That's been reset and out. And you can read it better, it will, um, with different background.
I know, you go all the time.
Do it, I don't like it.
There's a small fly that's, it's floating around, if you happen to see me whack it, there is. That's one candidate, she'll make them fly.
Oh, yeah, I'm on your side.
There's still a fly.
Just your own question.
Just wanted to say again, I've spent a lot of time with strategic plan. I think it's a great document. Thank you to Sarah Mitchell and Laura Ramsey and everybody who put in a lot of time on it, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to approve it. It's, it's really good work from the district.
I, I, I'm, we put that, um, should've spent more time on it, but I, the, I was looking for mentions of organizational, uh, and any, any feelings about, any discussion about, uh, potentially further exploring the K twelve district. And so it's a...
Just that it can be explored.
What?
K twelve regionalization is in the, exploring it is in the regional plan, it is in the strategic plan. And if there's interest, there, there's like two procedural steps in there. It is covered.
Okay, good, thank you.
But in a non-committal way.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it just basically develop a model for regionalization of district. Um, this section will be developed, and school will be decided for this topic, and it's...
Like a little place.
Place.
A lot, a lot of the districts are...
Most to approve? Perfect, I'll second that.
Excellent. All in favor of moving this district strategic plan forward? Alright, unanimously, that's it. Thank you for all that work, just to echo Justice's comment. Do you really wanna head into health insurance rates?
Well, we probably, that's all we talk about.
I know. Katie's all you've got.
Alright, so Shelley and I are gonna attack you in this. Um, we can start, so, uh, I just can't give it over to you. So we had a lot of conversations, and a lot of things have transpired in the last week. Um, Shelley will get into, um, as well with the hamster trust. Um, we also met earlier today with the town administrators from the three towns affected. Again, some of them are not affected by this, uh, other than their participation at Frontier. Um, so, and we've had meetings with, uh, different insurance groups and providers, and, um, there was a meeting with the hamster trust last week, and Shelley's gonna go through that information, because she knows it.
Okay, so, uh, in July, when we had the insurance advisory committee meeting and decided to set the rate on ten-one increase and created projections, um, we've been doing a quarterly update on that, so that was provided to the full insurance advisory committee. Revenues came in just about where the insurance director, executive director predicted they would be. Um, premiums collected for, uh, the last premium payment did include the ten-one increase. We're not yet seeing the benefit of the GLP-one elimination, because that just took effect on the first, so that'll come into the next billing cycles. Um, but claims are still a little bit high. They're not quite showing trends of stabilization. Um, and for the three-month period, claims ended up being about one point seven-ish million dollars over what was projected. Um, if you show that chart there, it just gives you a little idea of what claims look like. The baseline for the trust is just over six million that we pay across Blue Shield. Uh, and you can see there in August, there was a spike up to eight million. Um, came down a little bit in September, but still above the benchmark. So, um, we're hoping to continue to see that fall off so that there's no additional loss of, um, end-of-year revenue with that ten-one increase. Asset-wise, this question keeps coming up, whether it's to me or the full insurance advisory committee. People keep saying, when is the trust gonna run out of money? Essentially, the trust really shouldn't run out of money, because the premiums are coming in, and we're using today's premiums collected to pay last month's claim bill. So you're sort of doing it in the reverse direction, whereas in the past, we would've had savings reserved to help pay for those claim overages. So it really sort of is right now an in-out transaction. You can see the change in cash is minimal in the three-month period. Um, and accounts receivable, while it is an asset, it's, you know, we're just waiting for claim pay, or not claim payments, premium payments to come in from units. But that's really the bulk of the four-and-a-half million dollar swing, was on accounts receivable, not on cash. So, um, you know, it's not like the trust is going to run out of money today. We can continue to operate in this fashion, where we're sort of borrowing from premium payments to pay claim bills from the prior month. Uh, it's just not really an ideal scenario. And then projection-wise, um, so what did that loss of one point eight million or one point seven million in the three-month period do to the finances? So the ten-one premium increase would've given us about five point seven million dollars in the bank as reserves at the end of the fiscal year. With the loss that we've had, we're at about three point eight million. So we've taken into consideration the GLP-one change, the twenty percent rate increase, and we still have a bit of an allocation for a buffer. It should flatten out that financial stability. Um, but, you know, there's always this caution that with continuously high claims, it continues to strain the trust cash flow and cash reserves. But, um, executive committee is meeting right now, if not every week, every other week. We're trying to get claims data as quickly as we can from across Blue Shield and CBS Caremark, um, so that we can have the most up-to-date financial information. Um, did we talk about this?
I don't know, but I'm interested if you could possibly elaborate on that, yes? Did, you know, about, when you say closely monitoring it month-to-month now, more closely than you were before?
But previously, we were monitoring monthly. The executive committee, it was only meeting once a month, and now we're almost meeting, if not every week, every other week.
And I guess that, I mean, that's my concern, but not, I mean, I, I know all the towns are just, the towns are feared, the employees are feared, um, is it bad? Um, and there's a lot of upset that, um, you know, here, um, that is being directed towards, um, yeah. Uh, but, you know, and, and I'm like, you know, the, our, the school is acting completely irresponsibility, and we have excellent people on the job, but they can only bake the cake with the ingredients they have. Um, and, you know, to that end, the, the feeling that, you know, that we're hearing a lot is that it shouldn't have been as bad as it, it, the losses should not have been as bad, that we should, that the executive director should've been more on top of the trends, the claim, the high claim trends, that other insurance groups in the state were more on top of it and addressed it sooner than we did. And because so much time went by between the executive director notifying the executive committee that the, this, uh, claims, the GP-one stuff is, was way higher than, than was expected, that that's why the premium increase is so much higher than other insurance groups are paying. And, and, you know, I, I, I don't know, yeah, like, what, the, the result is that, um, the towns are having special town meetings where they're asking the voters for more money for this, after, for twenty percent in the middle of a budget cycle, um, after the eighteen percent just a few months ago. And, um, you know, and what, um, what, um, what are we doing about? Is, so is, is there a person that is responsible for not being on top of this? To, um, if so, what are we doing about it?
So I think that there's more information that's going to come in this, um, that will give you greater insight. I have been on the executive committee for two years. I've been the rep here since I started in two thousand nineteen. Um, personally, I don't think that this is any one person's fault. I think a lot has changed in the insurance industry in the last year. And I think, um, when you look at the financials, some writing was probably on the wall two-ish years ago, but not to the extreme change that has happened in the last twelve months. I mean, you can't predict that you're gonna lose fifteen million dollars in one year on insurance claims. You can't predict that. And it, and the GLP-one piece, um, I do think that we were too late on that. And I don't think that that is, while Joe Shea is the advisor to the insurance advisory committee, um, I think that he did the best that he could with the information that he had, and so much changed between setting the rates in January twenty twenty...
By June?
Yes, um, to June, that we couldn't really have predicted. And then he recommended changing the GLP-one, eliminating those weight loss drugs for drugs for July first. But there were some committee members, some of our municipal towns, that felt like they needed to talk to legal counsel to see if they were gonna have to re-achieve that with unions. And there wasn't time to do that. So that's probably really the one timing piece that has come up, that we could've done that back in January, and it would've saved a ton of money. Um, but it's not just the pharmaceuticals. Um, medical claims have been through the roof. I mean, that last graph, if you go back up to that, please, there is, um, shows a swing of millions of dollars in one month. Um, and there is a buffer built in, you know, we built in the projections with almost a six-million-dollar buffer. That's a lot of money. Um, but when it's getting eaten up, eaten up at this rate, I don't know how to get around that. I will say, though, the, the idea of other insurance trusts or whoever knowing and seeing the landscaping and predict it, I don't think that that's known either. The GIC got a, a two-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar bailout from the state last year.
Yeah, they don't like it when you use the word bailout, though.
Well, that's exactly what it is. They can't have a deficit in a, in a line.
It's an investment, I'm told. Now, I shouldn't use the word bailout, which I've done in multiple meetings. Um, uh, but, you know, that's one of the reasons why a lot of the towns are looking and moving in that direction, uh, 'cause it seems like the state supports that, and it seems like, from what I'm, you know, I keep hearing that there's a real loss of confidence in the leadership of...
So if we can go through this presentation, it's gonna point out some things about the goods and the bads then, and of our leadership. Not the goods and bads, but there's change.
And I will just say that the other piece that can offset some of what happens with other plans is the deductible. Right, so if you have no deductible, there's no deterrent there for you to move forward on something that might cost you at a deductible, thousands of dollars upfront before you got to that insurance coverage. So that is one piece that makes that a bit of a vulnerability.
And every unit has a representative or an opportunity to have a representative at the table. So while it's easy to blame Joe Shea, who's in the seat as the professional and advisor, it, the rest of us have had a vote in a site, and so I think, I think it's a really complicated situation. Um, he's taking a ton of heat right now, um, good, bad, or indifferent. His reasoning why, I can't speak to, but he did just announce his retirement for November fifteenth. He turned sixty-five on the fourteenth. Um, that came out, just in case there are rumors spreading around there, there was an insurance advisory committee on Thursday morning. Executive committee had met on Wednesday. Thursday afternoon at three-thirty, executive committee got a notice that he was retiring. So I just wanna get that message out there, that this is not a resignation. Um, there's also rumors that the state forced him to retire. The state doesn't have any oversight of, um, his role. He reports to the insurance advisory committee, which is made up of seventy-three member units. And, you know, we can all probably read into his reasoning for retirement, but...
The timing is, you know, suspicious.
I guess, so my other comment is, like, we can point fingers, but that doesn't fix the problem in front of us, right? So we can say, you know, you know, it's kinda like after a bad storm comes through, and someone says, well, we didn't put enough barriers up, someone should've known more, whatever. So you can blame Joe who's retiring. Go ahead, send him an email, tell him you're mad, but the problem in front of us now without Joe is we're retiring. So we gotta find our way out of this way now. We have a, you know, you're there, you know, blaming the executive committee, which we have a membership. The information you're getting compared to what other people, I bring Shelley to meetings with superintendents, because they have no idea what's going on. You know, we have a kind of insight into this a little bit deeper than most people do, and we should be fortunate of that. I just wanna make sure that, that I just kinda get the sense that someone's to blame. We'll find them, you can drag them out, but we still have a problem in the room that we had a hell of a reason for. You know what I mean? And so, and now we have another problem, because Joe Shea brings thirty years of, um, before this year, he was the greatest, you know, the greatest manager of insurance alive. He went for, how many years was he, fifteen years with low interest, very healthy accounts, those kind of things. The towns were loving it. We all, there were cheers in this room, and we had zero on insurance.
For two, or three years, zero on insurance.
Yeah, so you, hindsight's great. I didn't see, you have one against it, and you say, hey, let's put money aside, because I think he's wrong here, right? So it, it's easy in hindsight, or just, I just, I just, we also have other problems in front of us. I mean, going backwards and looking at why it happened, I think was last meeting, or the, you know, the last, this last meeting agenda. You know, we talked about the last thing. It's the only thing I can say, because now we gotta overcome, because now we gotta figure out, um, you know, how we feel Joe's position while we're in kind of a, um, tension moment, crisis. Call it a crisis, and, you know, um, and then also looking at the reality, because you made a statement earlier that our plan that costs more than the plans are on. Remember, we raised our plan by thirty-eight percent, and it's still cheaper than GIC. So just, just remember that. So, like, so people are, you know, we can kinda go down to that, so... So it's just, so we right now said, let's stick to GIC. We will pay more in our budget, and our, in our, our, our employees, we're, we're trying to get the best possible affordable plan for them, will be paying more too, and they'll be paying more deductibles, um, out-of-pocket expenses to them. So it's, I'm sure you want to take it through the numbers here.
Yeah, so the trust plan is in the left column. The Health New England HMO is probably the most comparable plan to the Blue Cross Blue Shield, with the exception that it is just regional. The trust has a bench, or not the trust, the GIC has a benchmark plan, which is Heart Pilgrim. That is the plan that most employees go with, retirees. You can see there, they do not offer an individual plus one plan. It's individual or family. And if you add in the monthly premium plus the possible deductible per person or per family, and this doesn't even mention copays for doctors' visits, which are tiered, depending on where you go to the doctor and who you see, our employees will, and us, will actually end up paying more than we're currently paying with a 38% increase. So the 38% increase is alarming. No one planned for it, right? So that's the hard part, because now we have to find out how to fund it. But when you actually look at the benefits that our employees and retirees are receiving compared to the GIC and the cost of the GIC plans, we're offering better insurance at the same price ultimately.
And I imagine our retirees would not love to be put on the Health New England Plan, comparable plan, because Blue Cross Blue Shield is more recognized in other areas of the country. There would be a lot of them. It would cause a major disruption to our employees receiving health services. They're gonna have to adjust their plans based on where they live and so on and so forth. So that's not the dried in factor, but it is another factor.
And I think what I'm hearing as an executive committee member is that the membership sees this. The math is easy here, right? And we also know GIC is gonna have an increased July 1st. So is the trust, if the trust makes it through this mess. I think what's scary for people is, one, the risk of not having benefit at all. And, two, future instability. So the GIC is a state program. While we pay premiums into it, if you're part of it, the state makes an investment into the employees and retirees that are part of the GIC and they do have to write side the budget. They can't have a deficit in that account. So if claims are high, which they have been with the GIC for, I think, at least two years now, and they're already in the deficit for the new year, the state has to fund that account. So there's stability, I think, that people see with GIC in that regard. GIC could still have maybe a rate increases. I don't know if it's ever done before, but it's certainly a possibility if the state budget is bad enough and they have to come up with a way to cover deficits. So I think that people are, people are upset. I think people have lost trust in the trust, and in Joe Shea in particular. And I think people are scared about not having insurance for retirees and employees. But this, the GIC isn't necessarily the better place to go.
Can you talk a little bit about the implication of if we did go to GIC, what would be the claim impact?
Yeah, so...
Because I think that that's an important piece, you have these figures, but that's...
Yep.
Yeah.
So if we were to leave the trust, whether we decided to go with GIC, whether we go with Maya, whether we self-insure, and Darius is gonna talk a little bit about other options there too, we would have to cover our claim runoff by contract with the trust for up to 18 months, which means that come July 1st, we are responsible for any unpaid medical and pharmaceutical claims as of July 1st. So if someone has major surgery or goes in for chemo treatments on June 30th, the trust will not have paid that bill, we will be responsible for it. So it's going to be incredibly costly, completely unpredictable, and put smaller members in a really tough spot. It's gonna put everyone in a tough spot, large or small. And you can't predict that. We don't know what our claim history looks like to even try to predict it. And we don't know what's gonna happen. You know, very well could be that if employees find out that you're changing insurance that's not as rich in benefits, they're gonna go get as many things taken care of as they can in the current plan year, which is just gonna drive up our claims. So no matter which way you look at it, there's risk involved. However, we proceed, whether it's financial risk, risk for our employees, risk for everyone involved, so.
And so as we kinda talk about risk, so is that concern of like, what if the trust closes shop next week, right? The trust would only close if we close it as members. So even, so this is kinda wrapping your head around this. So if we were to leave right now, there would be a cost, right? The runoff cost that we would have to budget for. And then there would be the cost of coming out to a new plan. And then, and so forth. So, you know, generally those costs. If the trust was to run out of money, they again will come to us and say, you guys wanna pay more, right? And there has to be a dollar amount in which we say, you know, we don't have to pre-present this because the problem hasn't existed, but I'm talking about if we reach that cliff of running out of money, of the trust running out of money. The trust can ask for more money. And the towns would probably be smart to say, we will pay this, and then begin the operative process. And then work with the trust to say, you know, we're gonna dissolve it here, we've gotten too larger. If the cost starts becoming bigger than the other plans, then you really have no argument with the state or the trust. And then, you know, so I'm just kinda talking about that. The edges, we're not gonna suddenly get an email and be out, and the trust is gonna say we're closed. It's the trust, we are the trust, right? So we are just like a town, a part of a regional agreement. You know, so together they decide what's going to happen. And nobody, and collectively only one town voted against the increase, wants the coverage to suddenly stop. You know, so, and if we reach that point, yes, again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough, it's gonna be another crisis moment. But the costs are not going to be so astronomical. There's gonna have to be reductions in budget, in town budgets, and we would have to do reductions in our budget here to cover those costs. But it's not, it's not like you can't do it, like it can be done. You know, a lot of, like a lot of other, it's like a bad ice storm that costs thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. You know what I mean? Like, you know, those things do happen, so we could get through it. It's not, I don't wanna make, I don't wanna be in a fear of decision-making that what if, what if? So if that was to happen, we would find a way around it. Maybe also, we talked a little bit about the ability to self-insure could also happen. We can go directly to Blue Cross Blue Shield with a broker, most likely, and be able to take on insurance ourselves. What it does requires us to have money behind that. You know, and so, you know, Frontier right now, you know, again, crisis moment, this is all in... And please, John, I didn't even say that, say it clear. These are all if, what ifs. But, you know, we could insure our own employees, back up that insurance with our own E and D. You know, we also have school choice monies. We have those reserves that we don't want to be spending on this, but if we had to be, come. So I think it's just, you know, it's a bad worst-case scenario, but it's a lot better than a lot of other schools and towns are in that sense, so.
That scenario that you're laying out is an argument, another argument in favor of a case for a regionalization. Because this pertains to three towns. And that's, that's what people looking at this might not realize, that it's not just your local school, but your town, school district, your town elementary school. It's all the town employees besides that, which in Condes case is like five people. But in the Deerfield and Sundown had real, not Sundown, Deerfield, even Wateley and more.
Note that you're, yeah, note that you are, while the towns are going through that and they're getting hit proportionally to their size, the number of employees that you are overseeing within this is 100... Frontier. So you're dealing with 180 souls, so to speak, right? So our, your, we're, Frontier is considered kind of a mid-size insurance inside the group. A lot of the towns are really considered small. We're mid-size, we also have iron power because we're a mid-size group. We're attracted to, if we do end up going out to the market for whatever reason. This is just information I give along the way. We're not, there's some really big groups in the trust, like Belcher Town is a really big group. South Avenue is a really big group. But we're kind of a mid-size, you know, we're probably in the top 10 in size. And I made that number up, sorry to hear on the... We're in the upper, upper quarter, I would say, of the trust committee. So, alright, so I kinda put all that out there because we're working through this. Where's that guy off, John? Joe Shea, go back to Joe Shea.
Oh, okay, so let's go back to Joe Shea. So Joe Shea resigned, executive committee...
He resigned?
No, I'm sorry, I keep doing that, retired, it's really important, I have to say.
Whatever that's...
Oh. Unfortunately, a memo did go out...
Not from me.
Not from us, but from a, you know, from a person in charge in the area, and it said he resigned. And so it was kinda like, no, he did not. There was rumors behind that immediately. So no, he did retire and announced a lot and such. The impact is the same, but I'd like to respect the person, you know, I have respect for people in leadership positions who are getting beat up. You know what I mean? So like, you know, translate what it is, you got enough?
Why exactly do you respect them?
I don't know, but, so anyway, so they met today, they can't go the details of it because there's a full group meeting coming up.
Yeah, so their executive committee will make a recommendation on how to proceed with replacing Joe's position. So the full insurance advisory committee will be on Thursday, and then we will go from there. So this just, the timing is terrible and has a larger impact than anyone could predict, but it could be positive.
I don't know, I looked at it a way as a positive. I think a lot of people are frustrated with Joe and then sometimes to bring in a different face in a crisis sometimes. So I think to continue to be optimistically positive.
In the meantime, the trust has also requested full claim history for two years from Blue Cross Blue Shield so that we can quote other companies besides Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we're looking at Signal, looking at, looking at Heart Pilgrim. Also asked Blue Cross Blue Shield for some alternate plan options. And then we will put out technically the pharmacy plan. We have one more year on the agreement when we can pull out some, we'll do good pharmacy as well. And with looking at pharmacy in particular, they'll look at our claim history and say, okay, X, Y, Z on your claims is related to diabetic drugs. So they'll try and find a program to get us the deepest discounts on those type of drugs. So really, we have a consultant doing a deep dive into the claim information. So...
That's good, I'd like to hear that.
The thought behind that is to be able to either present plans and prove that our Blue Cross Blue Shield plan is the best at the cheapest premiums, or we could offer additional plans. Instead of just the Blue Cross, we could add items, add deductibles, you know, those kind of things. So it sounds like that's what the full insurance advisory committee wants, so we're doing due diligence and getting our research on there. We won't have info on that probably until before Thanksgiving. Which all impacts the timing, because the GIC deadline in statute is December 1st or July 1st enrollment. So if Frontier or any of the other seventy-three units wanted to leave the trust and go to the GIC, you have to do that in writing, I think, like, before July 1st. There's certain steps that you have to take according to the statute. So it's making the whole situation a little bit more heightened because there's time sensitive.
It's before July 1st?
Of course. So you have to notify them by July, by December 1st that you wanna join the next July.
Okay.
With Maya, if we were to go to Maya, they're similar to... I did that wrong again, I'm supposed to say M-I-I-A, not M-I-A-A. Maya is similar to the trust, it's structured in the same way. There are some greater securities, I think, with Maya. They don't have a claim runoff period. If you leave after the two-year commitment, you walk out the door, you don't have that claim runoff. It's just your book of business, so if you don't have high claims, your rates could be better. Whereas with the trust, you share some of that risk because if you're a small unit, you help pay for some of those larger claims, but you're getting a good insurance plan. If we went with an independent broker to try to insure on our own directly with a company, it's less restrictive in timeline. We do have to pull some detailed census information. Typically, when we do census, it's just employee data, but this would be collecting all subscriber data as well and submitting that and then getting our claim information. So we have some time if we go ahead with Maya or another broker. If the school committee, because ultimately this is your decision, it's not our decision on how we proceed with this. If we wanted to go with GIC, then, you know, Darius and I would start those steps. We are talking, we have another insurance meeting tomorrow with a different broker. And then I requested our claim data from the trust, so we're in process. It's just, all it's gonna take time.
As you're kinda talking about the implications of the change in insurance, who offers the insurance in terms of the teachers' contract?
So we can change carriers. The problem comes into play is if you're reducing benefits. So if we're adding a deductible, we're adding tiered copays, some of that might require negotiation with the two unions. Going to the GIC, because we've adopted Chapter 32P, Sessions 21 to 23, which is particular to like group insurance purchasing. School committee adopted that years ago, so we could join the GIC very easily.
If there's savings, you have to pay out the savings, but that's not gonna be the problem.
It's not, yes.
In fact, it's gonna be a problem to almost any plan you go to, there won't be saving. But if there was savings, you'd have to, there's a percentage you'd pay out to back to the teachers in that first year.
That's in the law as well.
It's in the law, so, but that's not likely the case.
If you're giving this answer on behalf of Frontier, the Union 38 Schools, with the exception of Sundown, that is not a bargain for their town employees.
Their town employees, the select board would have to bargain with any unions. If you have a police union, which I think Deerfield might be...
Deerfield's own, which is...
Any teacher union, any IA union. If you're reducing benefits, you'd like to have our...
Is it possible to offer an option? Do we have enough employees that we could say, oh, you employee could choose between GIC and the trust? Or are they kind of all or nothing options or...
So we talked about that, we didn't talk about that. And the answer on that was, so with, one thing was, Ken, where the answer came in was, in the trust, they said, we have more than one plan. We have a plan that goes through Blue Cross Blue Shield and have a plan that goes with Heart Pilgrim or something of that sort. And have different costs, you know, that kind of thing. And they said that the brokers, the other side of that, they don't want that. You know, they want, they want to take it as a package or a one. They also have more of a guarantee of what they're getting when they sign on. If they're gonna get you some way or another, they want to be able to enroll the health insurance. So I imagine the same kind of idea applied to, with my somewhat knowledge on that, just hearing Michael talk about that. Also understand that while I said we were a mid-size group, so we are attractive business-wise, insurance groups don't have to take it. So, you know, let's say we applied to Maya and they looked at us and we don't know this and just making this up. Let's say our claim history is very high. We have a high number of people that are, you know, diseases or such. They can say, you know, your plan, we don't want it. And they can just, you know, just like left it. So it is, that is a problem that some of the smaller units we may run into where you can't just get it done by anyone.
But that's not true at GIC, right? They have to give us...
They have to give us...
I think I've heard of another regional school, and I don't wanna name it because I could be misremembering, but they have a certain plan for their retirees and they have a certain plan for their employees. And those could be different. But we couldn't split and be part of the trust and be part of GIC. That wouldn't work. I had to thought of something else, so... Oh. It's not, it had to do with the pain, now I'll think of it if I can. Had to do with saying things, it kinda had to have to say things.
So I just, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding. So right now, we don't have the information about our Frontier claim history, but he's requested the information so that then we will, so then we will know that information. Like, are we, are we actually an attractive group to other insurance companies? Is that right?
Yep.
And that would be like, that would give us the information, obviously, in a healthcare private way of like, as a group, we are, we have had high claims with lots of health issues or we have had relatively low or were average.
Right. So we'll take that claim data and give it to, one, to multiple brokers and they will seek quotes on our behalf.
We won't know, looking at it, because we won't know the comparison.
But we'll have our info.
When we get our info, we have no idea if it's.
Right.
If it's a hot potato or if it's perfectly.
We just have a dollar amount.
We have a dollar, right? You know what I'm saying? But the way the question is asked, like, when we get the information, it's not going to be like, you're a four-star rating. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's just going to be the data unaligned. We won't know unless it's comparable to other groups. We would have to use a broker. We wouldn't be able to look at it and probably say the number of membership here. They need to look at it.
No, I wouldn't.
With that data, also would we be able to track from that how much in copays we've saved or deductible, you know, to get a sense of, but the copays and deductibles really a problem as a group and the aggregate. That's something we should be thinking about, not just for information.
I could ask the question to the trust.
I assume that would be helpful if you can.
I think that would be difficult or.
Sure.
Only because. Like their usage, right? Yeah, I'm like, who goes to what specialty or what, they're like, it might be.
So I guess to summarize where, I mean, the, I think Rochelle and I were the Joe shade curveball. It's not true curveball to what our planning was, but it's a curveball to how others are going to react in the trust, right? I think we're seeing in our conversations that a lot of people are sticking with the trust.
People want to stick with the trust.
They want to stick with the trust. Right now, our three towns are sticking with the trust. There's no formal movements to move to the GIC right now. I believe our state legislators are, things we're pushing, but are suggesting a strong move that people move to the GIC. And so there's still conversations of that happening. So right now, Rochelle and I are thinking is that a couple of things we're researching. One is can we create a.
Stabilization.
Stabilization account for insurance, put money into it. Because if we do decide to leave, we're going to have that runoff from that. And, you know, while we have different pockets of money, do we take one of those pockets and make a dedicated insurance kind of safety account looking forward as well? So we're looking to if we can legally do that. I mean, right now, we hold in other accounts and, you know, do a promise, make a promise to the table, but I think it'd be better to push it into account for that. So that if we do have to make a move, if we do stay with the trust and the trust ends up not fulfilling our needs, but that way, we could then begin to change and we won't have to worry about funding that change. Because no matter what, that's going to come, you know, I guess if we decide, not no matter what, you know, 10 years down the road, you're still going to have a runoff. You know, so that's one of the things. We are thinking that we're not going to make that GIC deadline, that we have enough, you know, trust, faith in the trust to get through another year. And still look and take it without being rushed into the GIC for the July enrollment. If we hold on another year, I kind of say the worst-case scenario is if things won't really sell, we would be able to weather that storm. It may cost a little bit, but we would still be able to look at MIA and other brokers at the same time without being forced into that 12-point decision, which really is, you got to back it up because you have to make that decision and you have to notify them by 12.
Yeah. And there is some notification still to the unions that has to be that, that you're making a change, but it's a smoother transition than going.
So I guess what we're saying is that you make the decision, but we're going to get, we're going to get hit by a deadline or kind of letting you guys know that deadline's coming and that we see it coming and are kind of where we are right now, although we have, you know, a big week in the sense of looking at the leadership change and what that is and what that comes out with. And then Friday, the state legislatures, I mean, with the executive board, we don't know what they're talking about, we haven't sidetracked, it was on the executive board. So, you know, what is that conversation about? So we're still kind of collecting information, but the last thing I want to do is come to and say, well, we missed that deadline. Well, we wanted to do that. So if this group really wants to move toward the GIC, you know, we really are going to have to probably have another, maybe two weeks, have another meeting or such to discuss that again, because we got to get our ducks in the row.
I don't know what, you know, we've never really had a discussion of philosophy, the philosophy of health insurance in this room. But, you know, if, if you believe that equity and fairness in health insurance and in healthcare delivery is going to be found in a single payer healthcare system like it is in every other industrialized nation on earth besides this one, that, and if you believe that the Blue Cross isn't, that isn't, United Healthcare's take about 40 cents out of every healthcare dollar and return it to shareholders instead of, you know, and that the GIC is a state operation, it is government help, it is government delivery of healthcare. We don't, we never really talk about that, but philosophically, that's what aligns with my beliefs is to go to GIC. It still is a mystery to me why it would appear from the information we have that right now benefits to the employees are better in Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I find that hard to believe. Are we really comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges? I don't know.
Well, we have plans with no deductibles and.
I understand that.
Copays, so.
I understand that.
That in itself makes it a better option for employees.
It does.
We also have national coverage, right? So Blue Cross Blue Shield isn't just regional.
I would disagree that GIC is anything but a single payer system.
Well, it moves in that direction.
It's brokered and subsidized, right? And it takes advantage of the fact that it's so many state employees. But somebody's been on GIC for 20 years with various options. It's just they're my broker and I don't gain, you know, choices here limited, but they're better than most companies because I have so many different choices I could choose from, but they're choices between mid and awful and, you know, they're not being paid forward to state.
All right. I'm glad you did that.
And each employer within the state is negotiating for rates in different, copays in different, there are some complaints. So, yeah. I would love to have a single payer plan, don't get me wrong, but that's not it.
How do we move in that direction?
I, that's likely beyond the scope. I mean, the fact that it's a state backed, it's a long table, it's a, it's that risky. And I just want to make sure I understood earlier that you said if we changed to GIC, that does have to be negotiated with the unions or that does not?
There's a notification process, but I do not believe we have to negotiate.
Even if it results in higher costs and therefore lower compensation?
Because it's the state program and the way that the statute is written, my understanding is that we will not have to negotiate that.
I believe what you're negotiating is what you're doing with the savings. They're not allowing you to make, they're not allowing you to make decisions that bring savings to, to the school on the, back to their benefit. And so if the cost is increased.
Okay.
But there will be some conversation and I imagine they will represent and, you know, the MTA insurance experience in this area and, you know, be a little bit back and forth, but I don't think we'll be able to negotiate.
How fairly have beginning members of the employee case gotten this information? What extent? Where are we compared to that?
We gave a presentation to the executive boards and then a second presentation to anybody who wanted to come about the increase in overall prices. The information of what we have this kind of detail, it's live video right now. So, you know, we said we'll move there anytime they want to talk about it, but certainly we're going to be with them and we're going to talk about the change and what that means and how we got there and that kind of thing. But, so, we gave the first presentation, you guys got on this, we gave that same presentation, same slideshow, same kind of go through. This is the first time we've done this kind of presentation we've had today.
Do you know what the claim runoff policy is if, if the trust were dissolved? It's still going to be extended eight months from that separation date, whether they close or.
Okay.
I think if they were to close mid-year, it presents a different scenario and I think Darius talked about this a little bit, I think the trust would be looking at how to price the plan so that units pay to get through to June 30th and then from July 1st, you'd have your claim runoff.
Maybe for all, for all, you know, this is the opposite, whatever the opposite of fund is, this is, this is kind of it. But, you know, and I think, I just know from the town point of view that everybody's really scared about the special town needs, it has the potential to be really ugly. And, I don't know, I'm just standing on it, I guess, kind of what's bothering my insurance questions.
I think they're stuck funding.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So they're all being transferred from free cash rate and so all three are.
Because if it doesn't pass, what, what do you do? You're going to be putting forth at the regular town meeting to play, pay prior year bills that you hadn't paid, so I don't know.
That's the worst case scenario coming, is asking people for their vote and telling them while you're asking for a vote, it doesn't matter what your vote is.
Right.
This is what's going to happen anyway. That's never fun.
So I guess one other question I have is whether or not we should anticipate, just because the timing is going to be right up against Thanksgiving.
That's what I'm saying, we should have a meeting early November if, outside of the other meeting, if.
The only problem is is we're not going to have any more information than we have right now. We can get independent broker quotes in 30 days. I mean.
You're not going to be able to have comparative quotes to the GIC. If you go to the GIC, you want to go there and feel, you know, touched upon kind of one of those things like the philosophy, what is this body's philosophy about that benefit? You know, health insurance is a huge benefit at Frontier, you know, the percentage we pay and the good plan that it is. So, you know, if we go to GIC, you're not going to be able to say, well, what the cost of MIA was going to be or the cost of, we won't have this number.
I didn't remember what I was going to say before. You had asked, can we have different plan offerings for different groups? So currently, and this would probably have to be negotiated, but currently what we have is if you're on the HMO, we cover 80/20. If you're on the PPO, we only cover 70% or 80%, so we set them 30 split. So you can change your plans, like it could be if you want the PPO, the employee pays 100% of it. You could change what those percentages look like. So we could try to be creative in that regard if we wanted to go with independent insurance. You can even do that with the trust. Each of the units have different percentage rates that they contribute and some of them don't even offer the PPO plan even though the trust has that available to us. So those are some things we could consider. Other things we haven't talked about is the contract does have a $1,000 payout if someone opts not to take our insurance. We could try to push that to bring costs down a little bit. If someone has a spouse that has a plan that they could get on, while it still has a cost to us, it's cheaper than what a family plan would be for the school. So just some other things to think about. But I do think the first decision is, do we want to move to the GIC because that does have a deadline or do we want to write out the trust and/or get quotes from other independent brokers?
I'd be interested to hear your rationale of our state legislature, let you know that you are correct that they are presuming GIC, I would like to know why, for coherent fashion than what I heard.
I haven't had a conversation with them. I would assume it's predictable and stable and we have budgets that fluctuate, you know, budgets that may be in our small towns. You're just not going to get this kind of fluctuation would be my, my guess. We recommend is to make, start stabilization.
So I have to find out from DESI if that is an account that a regional school or municipality can hold. I, there are certain restrictions on revolving funds related to tuitions, which is why we have the special ed revolving, elementary schools have early childhood revolving, we have the school choice. Those are all related to tuitions and revenues coming in. You can have a capital stabilization fund to save for capital expenses. I don't know if you can do it for healthcare insurance benefits. So it's on my list to reach out to some contacts at DESI. If we can do that, then yes, there would have to be a vote. It would likely require, I'm guessing, because the capital stabilization required it, but our four towns would likely have to approve it as well.
So what it sounds like to me is you're waiting for a vote, which might at least give us some estimate about what funds might be in a stabilization fund if we can set it up.
I mean, I think that's hard because we don't really know what people are going to get.
But at least it's something, right? Something better than like.
So I think we asked for, are you giving us 12 months of claim data? I can't remember. Well, we would know what our whole claim in that period was, so it would give us, you know.
Some, some.
Yes.
Some measures. And so we need to figure out if we can set up a fund and look at some claims that if you get some figured at least, start that idea about that forward. And maybe we'll have some update about what quotes have gone out, but not unlikely to have quotes back from anybody in a month.
Everyone we spoke, nobody's admitted to this before December 1st.
So the options are we either make a vote tonight to stay or that we meet in a month?
I would, yeah, I would, I don't feel comfortable. I mean, that's how we're meaning is not to go to the GIC, but there's, there's the latest kind of, I don't know if it's going to change. I don't know. The problem is like, there's still some information and we still have some time with that information on one side, but the other side is I doubt that information's going to change much. You know what I mean? Like, and so it's like, am I hesitating just to hesitate because it's easier to make the decision tomorrow, as we sometimes do in our lives?
Wow, I don't know. I mean, the insurance advisory committee technically could come up with a different plan for the trust.
Right.
Lifespan, outcome, where are we going? I mean, they might say, our insurance director just submitted retirement notice. The financials are in a terrible position. We should come up with a dissolution plan. That could happen, which then dramatically changes our conversation.
I'm just looking at this November, which means like we've got the 18th and 25th, I think are the only Tuesdays in the state options.
We have a meeting on the 12th, right?
Yeah.
I think it's joint Union 38, Frontier side, correct?
We changed it this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Regardless, though, it's good to be having these thoughts and these discussions because we are about to ask for 20% increase from the towns, decide what Frontier is doing to its budget to accommodate that without even asking the towns before. And that's just five months after asking the towns for 18% increase, so that's a discrepancy. That's, we ought to be doing this for sure.
So we have a meeting on the 12th.
So that's separate from the GIC.
That's the joint meeting is at 38.
Got it. Okay. I'm not dating 12th.
Again, I'm not dating 12th. If things go completely sideways, I will, maybe I'll get, you know, things go crazy at the meeting this week. I very much doubt it's going to be, but if it does, it'll be always going to be, or email, it's going to be.
Can I ask you questions? A question and for some information of that, the question is, the comparisons are the same 2080, 7030, the GIC comparisons.
We would set, yes. We would set, or yes, that would change.
The second, I would find it really helpful to know at that November twelfth meeting, what is the worst case scenario? Right? Like if, if the trust collapses, if we decide to say, if the trust collapses, how's that play out? Because that seems like a key concern.
I'm sure there's a lot of moving parts that we can kind of give you an idea. I'd like to provide that, how's that? So I accept your challenge.
Along with that same question, you had commented on it. If, if it fails and our option, like an emergency option is to self-insure for a unit this year, is there any way to figure out how much that would cost?
We could try to get, we could try to get an envelope estimate of what we're getting into, right? So we won't have a cost.
That we're going to get, or I don't know if we'll have it by November twelfth, though.
But we can try to see if there's any kind of.
See, we know if the cost will show this happening.
It would cost, right, I mean, it would certainly cost more, we can kind of look at that. But going back to what I said earlier, but no, I don't think the trust, the, all the areas of trust don't want to do that. We're in the position where we could actually probably pull a coffee because we do have reserves where we could self-insure and then we have that, you know, we can gamble with our reserves, which is what you don't want to do, but we could. Lots of, kind of, don't have that ability. They would rather probably pay, we'll pay another twenty percent and then, and then dissolve the trust at the end of next fiscal year. I think there'd be more planning like that because nobody, we're all in it together. There's nobody in the room, you know, everybody in the room has the same purpose, right? To provide healthcare for their employees. So nobody's going to say, hey, let's, let's just shut this thing down. Everybody in the room's got the same problem and the same concerns. So I think we're actually having deeper discussions regarding it than most groups are able to. Just in my conversations with people about what they know about stuff, we are usually information providing, so it's a lot.
Does GIC have any kind of emergency, like, you know, if something event happens, I can always change, I can change my insurance out of sight of open.
Typically, it has to be a life-changing event, had maybe got married, that kind of thing.
But do they have it for groups? I mean, can they, would they do that for us to skip that December first?
Oh, so I've asked, I've asked our state representative, I've talked with Natalie about this, and she said it's something that they're talking about, but they literally would have to change the law in order to have that discussion. So I think there's still, it's still on the table, but they can't say yes or no, whether or not it works.
I wonder the same thing, if one of the, one of the lifeboats of it would be, could they use special legislation to take this twelve thousand people, put it on the GIC outside of that? And they probably can't guarantee it, right? I imagine, but that was thinking the same kind of thing, rather than telling everybody to leave before it's reached its end, the trust has reached its end, you know, maybe it's, can we have a life raft, just, just, you know, what you, so it's, we were kind of talking the same.
Including potentially covering that runoff.
Right.
Is mobile with GIC?
Any other regarding health insurance questions?
Where are you?
I thought we were different. All right, so November twelfth, good update. Thank you for being so involved in this, outside of your regular duties.
Yep.
Appreciate it on lots of levels.
I forgot now and didn't.
Oh, yeah, they did, she didn't announce that, but they did, they elect the executive committee and show it was voted on. And it was contested, ten people for five votes, so people, yeah.
Ten people ran for.
They then heard of the audit.
No.
No, originally they didn't, but.
Yes, when I originally ran, I only put my name in because they sent email after email after email about open seats. And I was like, I guess, I twisted my arm. No.
No.
Someone texted me during the meeting and was like, really? You're putting your name back in there? I said, I can't, that doesn't sit well. Anyway.
All right, on the later topics. We've got second reading for these policies. Do you have any, anybody you think we should vote on individually? Yeah, I'm all for bundling. Any objection to bundling? All right, I would need a motion to adopt policies KBG, KBE, EFBA, ECAB, JJE, as outlined in the packet.
What she said?
I'll think of that.
All in favor? Any others that pass? All right, need to officially appoint a MASC delegate. I think we discussed this briefly. I think it was going to the conference and I believe that Jessica, put your head in.
I will be there at the time of the delegate assembly.
Is anybody else going to the MASC conference? Could you be so kind as to represent us as the delegate? Thank you, I appreciate it, and officially appoint you as the MASC delegate for Red Union.
Capital planning, just really briefly, so it's normal, we talk about capital plan in October. What we're looking at is the parking lot, the capital planning subcommittee is not that yet because we don't have the cost estimates, the general cost estimate from our conversion design yet. So I threw it on the agenda, think I would have those numbers to kind of give you an update where we're at. So looking at, you know, the cost of that parking lot will be in the range of a million dollars. It's with insurance going on at the same time and the other kind of cost of town. So it's going to be a lot of conversations about, you know, what we're going to be able to afford, how we're going to pay for it, what's going to be the capital cost of the town there and stuff. So that's the only thing we're looking at moving forward for next year for capital, outside of what we can make from ours.
One comment, except the building management system project funding is still there. We voted on it last school year. We're carrying that over as we continue to navigate how we pay for that project and what the scope of that project would be, so that could have come to fruition. That's two hundred thousand dollars that we have appropriated for that project.
So in general, that's kind of, so the conversation will be simple in what we're paying for, but it's going to be very expensive on the other hand. And again, that's why we created the capital for our newer members. We created a capital committee that's made up of a school crew member from each town and a select room member from each town. We kind of sit and talk about, you know, what the project is and how we're going to pay for it. So there's a lot of transparency through, you know, whether or not we go to a warrant, whether or not how we pay for it. We've done some other kind of creative things for paying for things, but this is. There's nothing less exciting than a parking lot, as like we're.
Except for health insurance, health insurance.
I guess you're right, well, I don't know. So, I mean, we have roof, we have the roof in the parking lot, which both are don't, you know, don't directly affect educating our kids, but they have to get done. Meeting at the end of the month, is that what it is? We have a schedule, that's something that's to do.
Can I say two other things? One, the new van is in, and logo, right? It has a hog on it. We got both vans now with the hogs on the side, so, and both are up and running, plates registered. So that's good news. And the fire panel in project is almost done. We have a couple of change orders. We're over budget by like sixteen hundred dollars, so we'll probably be using some school choice money to cover that pending any additional change orders.
Still have to fix the problem.
There's like little.
Healthcare, so sixteen hundred.
I know. But like punchless stuff still has to be gone through, so we're, we're in the final stages, but it's still progress.
All right. Speaking of being in the final stages, we are in the final stages. Jess, I know you don't like to be in the limelight, but Jess has been, is going to get the all-state committee award for MASC and just a very small recognition of all the work you do, which is, you know.
What's the award?
It's the.
Limelight, what's the award?
She nodded.
Jess does a lot of work.
I know, I know, I know. What's the award?
Twenty twenty-five MASC all-state school committee.
Congratulations.
Lot of work outside of anything that anyone is asked to do. And it's really, really appreciated by all of us here. Jess, it's good for you to be recognized, so thank you. That's all I have. On my report, anybody else from any committees have any updates?
Collaborative is in the process of choosing a new executive director and getting their money.
Darius, you're going to talk about the DESI chapter seven, the listening sessions, or should I?
Go ahead.
So in the final state budget, Senator Lewis, who's the chair of the joint committee on education, got included in an amendment instructing DESI to do a study on the needs for updating chapter seventy. This has been kind of controversial because a lot of the legislature thinks, well, we should finish implementing the Student Opportunity Act first. So it finally got through, it's sort of a smaller scale examination than otherwise could have been, but DESI has announced, and Darius has shared it out to all of us by email. They're doing listening sessions around the state, including one in Greenfields. And this is our opportunity to, to get our morality factored into our basic state funding and stop having to rely on rural aid. We would like rural aid, which is just a Band-Aid, to be outdated. I'm, we are finalizing talking points for the rural schools committee, which I will share out to all of you. Just wanted to suggest that even if you don't feel super confident and comfortable talking about those, you could just show up and make a three-sentence statement that you are a frontier school committee member and you would like to echo the importance of considering rural towns in chapter seventy updates. Just in terms of numbers, having people show up and say that could, could be powerful because there are not that many rural, you know, rural representatives in the legislature. They are wildly outperformed by non-rural people, so we need to, we need to show up in numbers as much as we can. So you don't need to say anything fancy, but.
Who's, who's, who's the legislature that's going, is that Jason?
What, what about Jason Lewis?
The legislature that's going to be there?
No, 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 this, this session is being run by DESI.
When is it?
Uh, great question. It's in Greenfield. There's also one online.
So I, I email all the information, it's in your inbox, if you haven't checked it out. Because I've got the.
Uh, Greenfield on Thursday, November sixth, four thirty to six thirty. And there's also an online session on Tuesday, November eighteenth, four to seven PM.
You mentioned Senator Lewis.
He's the one who got the amendment onto the budget to make this happen. There's a lot of resistance to this happening, but he finally got it through.
He's the one I like.
Yes. Although he's.
And on, you know, if you're planning your calendar to go to that, I also sent out, Perco is doing a unit against A-Tree, which if you didn't get it, I'll send it out to you, they just said that they had already sent it out to a principal or secretary, so. If you're so inclined, should keep a tree. Anybody want to do the honors and make the motion?
Both of them.
All right. Second, all in favor? Thank you for spending the time with us.